This is the time and place set aside for an adjourned meeting of the Montclair City Council, Monday, December 5, 2022. It is a council workshop to talk about our legislative advocacy presentation. Madam Clerk, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protimru.
Present.
Mayor Dutre.
I'm still here.
Thanks.
This brings us to item number three, council workshop, and we will hear from our legislative advocate, Mr. David Church. Welcome, sir, to a cold rainy West Coast.
I was about to say I don't know about the rain, but I thought it was unusually cold. Got off the airplane and it was only 59 degrees and I saw people with winter coats. My gosh, you have to know that I'm an old Minnesota boy. We'd wear T-shirts and shorts in this kind of weather and enjoy it. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protim, members of the council, as always, delighted to be here. It will not surprise you if I begin by saying Washington is in a kind of a state of flux, which for the most of us would be undesirable. We finished the elections. Well, we haven't quite finished the elections. There are still two congressional House races that have not been determined. There's one Senate race that's not yet been determined, and we have one vacancy. A member elected in November has since died, so there's a vacancy in Virginia. It's the South Richmond District. When I talk about a state of flux, it's the result of the election in which the Democrats appear to be overjoyed and are acting like winners, but they lost. And the Republicans were pretty dejected and acting like losers, but you see, they won. So it's just kind of this dichotomy of what's happening in Washington, at the same time having a change across the board in leadership. And I think one of the thoughts I'd want to leave with you tonight is that the leadership on both sides is untested for their roles. So I'm in no position tonight to tell you where you might be in March because we don't know. As a matter of fact, we're not even sure on the Republican side who may be leaders. Let me address that for just a second. Mr. McCarthy says that he will run for the speakership irrespective, and he is working hard to acquire support today. Now, the rules of the House are pretty simple but often misunderstood. You need the majority of the entire House that is present and voting. Ordinarily, that'd be 218 votes, but if someone says they're just voting present or someone else votes somewhere else, that lowers the threshold. There are currently five Republicans who say—now, I begin by saying Mr. McCarthy can only lose four votes where we are tonight to not be Speaker. There are five Republicans who say there are no conditions under which they will vote for him, and they will not vote present. Well, he's working very hard to acquire the votes that he's going to need. But again, the answer to this is that when the voting comes, it's a vote of the entire House, not divided by party. It's the majority of the entire House, present and voting. So if you vote present, you don't count. Now, who can be Speaker? Doesn't have to be a member of the House. In the history of America, it has always been a member of the House, but it doesn't have to be. Could be anyone. It does not have to be one of the persons who are nominated. You, as a member, can vote for anyone nominated or not. There's no ranked voting, so you don't have to—no one's eliminated if you only got three votes on the first round. The three votes could still continue to be voted for you in the second round and the fifth round, should it go that far. What I would say is it's going to be an interesting exercise. We will see just how effective Mr. McCarthy is at actually acquiring the votes that he needs. I have confidence in him, but there are people waiting in the wings who are—some of whom I know quite personally and are good friends of mine, who, at least below the surface, are making the moves should it be opportune to do so. If Mr. McCarthy clearly does not become Speaker, then who? I've not seen from Steve Scalise any real move to become Speaker and acquire that kind of power and authority. I think Jim Jordan from Ohio could be a candidate. I think the recently elected Whip, Tom Emmer from Minnesota, could be a candidate. I mentioned Tom Emmer, although more recently rising in the Republican caucus, about 40% of the entire caucus on the Republican side is there because he has been serving as the Chair of the Republican Congressional Campaign Committee, and he got him elected. So I wouldn't discount that. The answer is, we don't know. On the Democratic side, we have no opposition. We are fortunate here in Southern California, I think, for a couple of things. First of all, without being too partisan—well, you know, I'm a political prostitute. I just care what committee are you on and what can you do for my clients? And in that case, in two counts, Ken Calvert, a very senior member of the Appropriations Committee, was reelected. That matters. You've heard me say this a number of times before. One of the prevailing requirements for you to acquire power in Washington is just keep breathing. We worship at the altar of seniority. The longer you continue to breathe, the more power and influence you are likely to acquire. Ken Calvert fits that description in that he's been there. He's one of the most senior members of the Appropriations Committee, and I expect he will take charge of a subcommittee in which every member in the United States has an interest. That's real power and influence, and that can benefit us very directly going forward. And of course, the other advantage is our very good friend, Mr. Aguirre, who is now the third-ranking member in House leadership. You are—I think you have not been this well-positioned since some many years ago I was inquiring and counseling my clients here in the inland empire that greed is not a bad thing, and the current conditions will not last forever. And that was George Brown and Jerry Lewis. And you see, it's taken us that long to get back to where we are. So think carefully about what you're looking for in the coming year, and let's move to get that accomplished as rapidly as we can. And I'd like to come back and talk with you a little bit later in the spring. I don't know if it's going to take me two or three weeks in January to figure out where this Congress may be, or it may be two or three months before I really understand how—because we're going to have—we're going to have a lot of pious piffle in the beginning, after which we'll see if there are actions and there are groups that can actually carry out what they intended. And we are perhaps as fractionalized with ideologies now in the House. And remember, as closely divided as it is, virtually every member, when you can only lose two or three members, becomes the Speaker. We've just watched that happen in the U.S. Senate. Let me back off a little bit because in a discussion I had earlier today, I thought it's worth reiterating about just a bit. Now, I know all of you know, but I also understand we're on TV. So now I'm addressing the folks at home. The 117th Congress ceases to exist at noon on January 30. What that means is that all the legislation that has not then been agreed to in final form dies. There's no bill that survives. Now, the House is not a continuing body, so it ceases to exist and must be reconstituted at 12:01. The Senate is a continuing body, and the difference really is the adoption of the rules. The Senate can change the rules at any time. This is kind of one of the times that they might do that, but the House must readopt new rules every time. Sometimes that can be meaningful to you. Very often, in other times, it's just a pro forma exercise. We do elect the Speaker. I just finished covering the Speaker a little bit. But understand that there's no carryover of legislation. Now, you've heard, oh, Bill Number Three in the House, H.R. Three. Well, it comes back and it's H.R. Three next time. No, it's because they reserved the number for that particular piece of legislation, and that's how it wound up being known as H.R. Three. And I think the other admonition I'd leave you with tonight is so often, you Californians are so used to bill numbers. You know laws that are A B 15 or something, S B 15. You know this. Bill numbers in the national legislature are meaningless. Ideas matter. I have watched a bill go from thoroughly proposing Project A to all of a sudden proposing Project D, one of which had nothing to do with the other because the motion is—a motion to strike all after the enacting clause and insert therein. It meant everything in this number just went out, and it has a whole new meaning. Sometimes the same idea goes through multiple numbers just as it goes through the process. May have one number in committee, may have a different number on the floor, certainly is likely to have a different number in the Senate, and then we decide in the end which kind of bill got merged with which one. So I'm taking a little bit longer than I should have. You're used to numbers having meaning in Sacramento. They have no meaning in Washington. So so often you call me up and say, well, what's the position on H.R. 2763? I don't know. What does it deal with? Or what did you think it dealt with? And it may not deal with what you thought it did or what it did actually mean yesterday. Let me talk a little bit about one of the prime things. There are only a few things that the Congress has to do under the Constitution. Provide transportation, actually. Transportation dollars is a part of the Constitution. That's an obligation of the Congress. But the other thing is to fund the government. So the legislative—remember, not one penny of your tax money can be spent by the executive branch without the express authorization of the Congress. So we go through—what's confused in the press is the budget process. Yeah, we kind of do budgets sometimes and not other times, and it's a less important part of the process than the appropriations process. So if the budget committees both—remember, the President submits a budget. He has to do that under a statute that was passed in 1926. And there's some formula where after the second full moon on a Tuesday, if it's not raining, the budget has to be—the—I can't remember the formula, but there is one. Rarely met. When that budget goes to the Congress, basically, it's kind of a framework, but since 1976, when the budget committees were established, those are the committees that then develop a congressional budget, and their budget does not go back to the President for approval. Once he sends the O M B budget—and that O M B comes out of the requirement from 1926—once that budget goes to the Congress, it never goes back to the President. The budget of the United States is an internal working document of the legislative branch. In any event, if they pass one, that's great, and if they don't, then the appropriations committees deem a number to have been passed—they just make it up. They deem this number to have been passed by the Budget Committee, and that sets the caps for overall spending, for discretionary spending of your tax dollars. And I hope I'm not getting too far into the weeds here, but that's the overall concept with which you must deal when you're asking for things next year. Now, that authorization, the appropriations bills, have to be passed no longer than—or no later than 12:01 a.m. on October 1st. So did we do that this year? Well, no. See, we actually have extended it out until December 16 through a continuing resolution, and now there's some talk that we're going to continue the continuing resolutions to December 23. The controversy is not so much about the numbers anymore, although Kevin McCarthy has indicated he'd like to put a cap on spending of 1.5 trillion, as I recall the number, and Leahy, Chairman of the Committee in the Senate, said, well, why don't you come back to tell me about your number if we're still talking about this in January—and little dig here—if you happen to be Speaker? Yeah, it's a tough game in Washington. In any event, we're kind of agreement. Shelby, the ranking Republican member in the Senate, would like more. The numbers have kind of been agreed to. Shelby would like more of that money to go to the military. I think some of the House people would like more to be discretionary domestic spending. We'll see how those issues are being worked out. The Democrats are fairly adamant that they want to pass these appropriations bills before they adjourn at the end of the year. Republicans think, particularly in the House—not McConnell. McConnell would also like to pass the bills by the end of the year because in the Senate, he'd like to make certain that he has continuing funding for the war in Ukraine. He's not sure he's going to get that out of the House next year. There's some political play here. House Republicans seeing that they will have more power to determine what happens in these bills after January 3 would just as soon put it off until later. We'll see what happens. Earmarks. Our good friend from California, Tom McClintock, said we need to have a vote in the House Republican caucus because I don't think we should continue this whole business of earmarks, which has just come back into being in recent months. He lost. Was 50-something—let me see if I can find the number. He lost 52 to 158 in the Republican caucus in the House, and correspondingly, because it's not an issue in the Senate, we're going to see earmarks not only in the appropriations bills that are in front of the Congress right now, but I think next year as well. What does that mean for you? It means that you can actually have funds directed for your projects as a part of the discretionary money approval, if you will, through the appropriations process. End of the story is that I'm going to ask then that you consider again a trip, and I don't know when this should be because we don't have the process set because, as I said, I'm not certain about where we're going to be. I may not be two weeks into January, and I may not be by the end of February, but think sometime in terms of February, March, April. I'd like to see you come to Washington. It matters that you are there. It matters that you propose the projects that you want and sell them to people on the Hill and in the executive branch. So I think Mr. Jones has much more interesting things to tell you about than do I. At the end of his presentation, you can ask him all the questions that you'd like, and if you actually want to ask me something, Mr. Jones will answer it anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protim, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. David gave you sort of an overview of the budget process, the appropriations process in Washington. I'll sort of delve into more specifics, priorities that the city has been advancing and has an interest in, at least projects that we've been reviewing and pushing forward with your congressional delegation in the fiscal year '23, which, as David mentioned, began officially on October 1, but Congress has yet to complete the budget or the appropriations process, and we hope that they will do that by the end of the year. Earlier this year, essentially in January and February, I was working with the city staff on preparing projects to submit to your congressional delegation to Congresswoman Norma Torres, Dianne Feinstein, and Alex Padilla. And on the appropriations cycle around, we submitted a $2 million request for the Montclair Transcenter South parking structure. We submitted a $2 million request for the Rita Ranch Citrus Museum project, and we submitted an $800,000 request for your police body cameras. And out of those projects, Congresswoman Torres submitted the public safety project for the police cameras, and that was included in the Commerce, Justice, and Science appropriations bill in the House side. The full House adopted a consolidated appropriations bill this past summer, which included the $800,000, what they call community project funding, but what we normally everybody else calls an earmark, that is specifically designated to the city of Montclair. And that has been pending before the Senate. The good news, as David mentioned, there's an agreement to include earmarks in the omnibus appropriations bill that they're negotiating as we speak, and if they're able to complete that before Christmas, we fully expect to have the $800,000 for Montclair in that bill. And again, just to highlight what the Congresswoman Torres did in the last fiscal year, FY '22, she—which was adopted in March of this year—and I know this gets confusing—even though they were supposed to adopt it the last year, they were five months behind schedule, nothing unusual for members of Congress. You folks have to actually pass budgets every year on time. Members of Congress, as David explained, do not have to do that. But we're optimistic. In FY '22, the Congresswoman secured $2 million for the Saratoga Project, park improvement, for you folks. And so in the FY '23 cycle, she's secured the $800,000 for the police cameras. And what I'm going to be doing is working with your staff. I've already shared some information, different appropriation accounts and bills that we can target, and so we will sort of review those, review the priorities that the council and your staff come up with, and see what appropriation bills we can target and look at where the funding—that the Congresswoman, where her earmark funding is going, also where Senator Feinstein and Alex Padilla, where their funding is going. They each have different interests, and so we'll play that up. We'll try and meet those, as well as meet the interest and priorities of the city. We have some time, but this is a good time, the next two months, to sort of think about the different projects and priorities that you would like to advance in the next fiscal year, in the FY '24 process. And these are front-loaded, so essentially the House basically operates and moves first in the appropriations cycle. We'll have calls for projects probably in February of this year in the House side, maybe March in the Senate, and we will then have to submit forms. And usually what I'd like to do, and I work with your staff, we talk to the congressional offices. If we can, we try and vet the projects before we submit them so we have a sense of whether or not we're in the ballpark. These are things that they feel comfortable advancing. And then the process sort of kicks into high gear on the House side, where, as David mentioned, we'd like to have you come out in February, March, or April because—the reason is because that's before the final decisions have been made on your appropriations request, both in the House and Senate. And we think that's very valuable to have you in Washington because you not only meet with your members of Congress, but with committee folks, other members, as well as agencies that have an impact on different grants that you may have an interest in. And I'll talk briefly about some projects and grants that we're looking at for the city in the upcoming year. So that's the process as far as trying with the appropriations and the earmarks. It's—on the House side, they move first in early spring, and then the Senate—if we're lucky, they get things out by the end of July. That's if we're lucky, you know? And usually we have a sense of what the projects—that—in this case, Feinstein and Padilla would be requesting, probably sometime in June. On the House side, we'll have a notice. Members of the House usually put out their list of projects in April. You know, they make that list—you know, it's public information. But in the meantime, what we do, there's a lot of work that goes behind the scene, and we'll be working with the staffs of each respective office, talking about your specific priorities that we've submitted. And so that's important. All that stuff works. You just have to be persistent, and having you come to Washington again is important in that process. So we would strongly encourage you to do that, and I can—once the calendar, congressional calendar, is made available in the House and the Senate, we can then tell you when members of Congress are going to be in session. Obviously, we'd prefer to have you in town when they're in Washington, not out here. You can clearly see your members anytime you want back here. But the reality is you can't see agencies and other things. And I think members do make note that you've been—you've come to Washington not to see them as well, but to do other things, to push priorities with agencies, and I think that does matter. I think they pay attention to that. One of the—you know, obviously, the Gold Line extension projects is a big issue. I understand that L.A. Metro has very recently—as of last week—the board approved three projects asking for $1.9 billion from the state, of which about a little less than $800 million—I think it's $798 million—is for the Gold Line—or the L-line, I guess is what they call it. And that's—that is ranked number two out of three projects, so I don't know where that stands as far as competitively in California, Sacramento, if you're going to get—you know, if Metro is able to get the $1.9 billion or if they get less and how that affects the application for the Gold Line project. But if you do get the money, that's great news. If you don't, then we have to make plans. We've been talking about this for a long time. It seems like the Gold Line keeps on being delayed, you know, year after year after year. It's supposed to come to Montclair, go to Claremont, and then go to Montclair, and this has been going on for quite some time. You know, I think it was, what, 2018, 2020, 2022, 2024, 2028? I guess it's part of the 2828 plan. I don't know if this materializes or not, but, you know, that certainly would be an issue. I know that Representative Torres has been monitoring this very closely, is very supportive of getting this project to Montclair, so you have a strong ally there. And certainly with Feinstein and Padilla, we can certainly leverage their political clout on this project. I think the challenge for us is that it has to be sort of a regional effort initiative, and we would certainly want to have the Gold Line Construction Authority onboard. I understand they may have some issues internally with L.A. Metro in which they may not be able to ask for federal funds, but that's maybe something that can be worked out or we can get, you know, more clarification. But my understanding is that Sacramento, at the end of January, will be making—or Caltrans will be making a decision, so we will know, hopefully, by the end of January, where things stand, whether or not you have the money for the Gold Line extension or whether or not there's a shortfall, and if so, how much. And then, you know, we can work from there, and I think we can strategize about the best way to move forward. You know, there've been discussions with the Congresswoman about doing some legislative measures that might be able to expedite the process from your vantage point. So, you know, all options are on the table on that. The other project I wanted to bring out to your attention was the Central Avenue Bridge replacement. That's something that, you know, you need—I think— That's something that, you know, you need, I think, around $15 million. That's money coming in, because you have already a match for that, a local match. You know, we're, I'm going to be reaching out to your city staff in the next couple of days, week, and to talk about, there's some grants that are becoming available from the Department of Transportation, and we'll be looking at that, and to see if there's, those grants are worth pursuing for this project. I think in the past, we've had Padilla's support on this project through the appropriations process, and I think Torres certainly is supportive. We just have to, you know, present the budget and identify, you know, certain grants that we think are viable for this project, and then she will submit letters of support. So these are sort of the areas that we've been working on in the past year. Some of this is fluid, you know? As I said, we are going to be, I'm going to be reaching out again to your staff, so we can identify with your input priorities that you would like to advance in the FY24 appropriation cycle, which begins in earnest early next year, and that's when we have to begin to submit these projects. So we have some time, but not too much time. And so we'd like to get that ball rolling. I have some recommendations. We try and spread your projects into different appropriation bills and different appropriation accounts, so they don't compete against each other. The one thing you don't want to do is put two projects into one appropriations account, because then they both, you know, you're knocking one project out, right? Because a member is not going to push two projects in one appropriations account. Doesn't work that way. So, you know, we want to be sensitive to that. You know, there are different pots that we can target, depending on the projects that you want to advance. But I think overall, you've done a very good job. Your staff has done really a very good job of putting things together, these projects and descriptions, and I think they deserve high praise for that. And so I'm available to answer any questions about this. Any hard questions, please ask David. Easy ones, I'll try and answer those.
Before we get into council comment, Madam City Clerk, do you have any public comment?
I don't have any requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. Then I would ask the council if they have any specific questions or comments.
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I want to thank you for the work that you do, because it doesn't sound easy. It seems like it's a lot of very kind diplomatic arm wrestling. And so I really appreciate the work that you do and your focus on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Dutre.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, on the Gold Line, I appreciate Mayor Pro Tim Ru, myself. We were on the line, or last Thursday, that's when the LA Metro Board met to discuss applying for the DIRCP application funding. And Gold Line was number two, as pointed out, and I think it was a huge leap forward to get Gold Line to Montclair. Used to have a lot of hurdles to go through. We'll find out at the end of January how it scores well. But, you know, Gold Line is a shovel-ready project that should have been built by now. And the other two projects that LA Metro had on the list, one of them, number one project, had about $800 million of federal funds that was at major risk of losing, but that was not shovel-ready. So we will see what the state does. The way I understand this is there were two bills in Sacramento to allocate the surplus of state money. One bill, way to sound like it, is essentially LA Metro was going to get a billion dollars because of population, the population. So there's a billion dollars supposedly LA Metro has, 600 million of that is for the first priority project. You need 800 million dollars for Gold Line, so the other 400 million is, I guess, we will follow, you know, balance of the billion dollars. Used to have a $4 million deficit. The second bill created competitive funds with a surplus, which LA Metro, SBCTA, Orange County, et cetera, Southern California agencies have to apply for. Again, I don't know how many shovel-ready projects are out there, especially, and these are for existing projects. Gold Line was an existing project funded through TRCP about four, five years ago. So I really think, I feel good, and the Board or the body that decides this, these are not politicians, these are the bureaucrats, I don't, excuse me, staff, but they have a point system they have to go through, and they'll go through each criteria and, I guess, add points, or give a point evaluation, the way it works, and then at the end of the day, they'll add up all the points, if I'm correct how it works, and that's how it can be determined. So it's not a body where the electives and the politics gets involved in. So again, I'm very hopeful. Kind of wish this was a federalized project. And I understand LA Metro didn't want to do it, but we'll see. The second point I want to bring up here is, obviously, some of us need to go to Washington. It's good for us to go there and let people know we're interested in our projects, that was brought up by Jamie. And I'll move on to the politics now of Washington DC. But I remember every, you know, this is going over 10 years ago, you know, the squabbles among the Republicans and the Democrats, especially in the House, and it gets worse and worse and worse, and then between the House and the Senate, Republicans in the White House, because usually had, you know, different parties involved, and just gets worse, and, you know, continuing budget resolutions, and everything's down to the last minute, squabbling going on, and you kind of ask yourself, how worse is this going to get? And it's pretty amazing, you know? We have a former president that kind of questions the whole idea of having a constitution, you know? He said it, or he said it on a social media. And then you look at where the House is at, you're not even sure who the Speaker is going to be, because usually typically that's resolved by now, and it's both sides. I'm not just speaking, I'm not picking on one party, the Republicans. It's Democrats too, they have a, you know, there's a strong progressive movement among Democrats that are challenging the moderates, Democrats. And, you know, it's craziness. I think it's just crazy what's, where our national politics has gone to. I mean, to the point now, we can't even agree on election results, and, you know, been stolen or fake elections and this, you know, this whole issue that just happened in Arizona. It's craziness, I know. And, you know, somebody asked me, you know, it's the politicians' fault. No, it's not. It's the people's fault, you know? We have brought ourselves down to this level, where we just don't trust our government anymore. We don't trust our elected officials anymore, and we have these hard facts, ideas in our minds, doesn't matter if it's true or not true, but this is what I believe in. And then we also have this position where if you're a Democrat, I don't trust you, I don't, I'm not voting for you, because you're a Democrat, because you're not part of, you know, we've turned into these, like India, you know, where they have villages and, you know, they, sex and all that. That's, you know, fortunately, we've come to that level. You know, it's amazing, during my, you know, city council races, and it's amazing how many people now ask you, they want to know if you're a Democrat or Republican. I don't care about everything, are you a D or an R? That's how much I want to vote for you. And that's not how we should be, you know, we should be voting, selecting our leaders. But that's what it's come down to, you know? It comes down to now, in the old days, George Brown and Jerry Lewis, they probably had coffee and breakfast and sat in each other's offices and talked policy. Can't do that these days. You can't have Democrats and Republicans socializing, talking to each other, because, you know, a special interest group sees that, and they blast it on social media, this politician's a traitor, because he's talking to somebody on the other side of the aisle. It's crazy. We, it's crazy and scary where we're going. So how do you fix that part? I don't know. I do know this one thing is that, you know, I'm a firm believer, yeah, I'm an elected official, this is a government agency, people want their potholes filled, they want the fire truck to show up when they call 911, you know, they want the parks to look good. I do believe the same thing, the federal government has a responsibility to make sure we have a strong military, we have, you know, a good transportation system, you know, we have a strong economy that we're competing with China in the world. And frankly, we are the leaders of the freedom of this world, especially now with what's going on in Ukraine, and making sure that, you know, you know, we're in a cold war, I mean, you know, we're back to the days of Russia, that we don't have a World War III occur there, or we don't, we don't lose the balance of power in Europe, we don't lose the balance of power internationally. We have, you know, we have a government that needs to do that. And I'm talking here and bobbling off, but I want to say this, this is the greatest nation in the world. Yes, we have had many faults, you know? This is the greatest nation in the world. Why? Because we have a firm believer in our democracy, we are a firm believer in a market capitalist system, innovation, you know? We are a firm believer in this whole global justice and equity, you know? We have fought wars for good reasons. We've fought in some wars that we should never have been involved in, but we have fought war for good reasons. We have saved this planet, in my opinion. We're trying to save this planet now with climate change. And I'm hoping that as a government, as a country, we can think more about what's important for the United States of America as a nation, and less, and think less about what's important to me individually, especially, you know, especially, it's self-serving. We can't be self-serving in this country. We have to look out for the best interest of this nation, because that's what makes our generation stronger. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Mr. Jones, give me your first name again.
Jamie.
Jamie, thank you. I appreciate both of you being here again annually, and thank you for the advocacy work you do on behalf of us, your clients, which in turn is on behalf of our 38,000, 40,000 residents. So I appreciate that. David actually described, what I would say his presentation and his synopsis of the state of Congress is spot-on, especially regarding the close majority that is anticipated Republicans will have. I think we are in for some unpredicted outcomes, because of five or six individuals, 10 individuals, that Freedom Caucus on the right, then you have the Progressive Caucus on the left, and they might actually be the ones that wield the outcome of legislation. And those small numbers, because of the narrow majority, will actually have greater impact and significance. You hit that right on the head. And you're right, in California, we are used to SB Senate bill, AB this, and then a issue is attached to it, but then you described, and I forget the language, because when I was lobbying in Sacramento, the issue of striking language in a bill and inserting it into another, we call it a gut and amend in Sacramento. And it's frowned upon by one party, and another party tends to use it a little bit more liberally. So it, you're absolutely right, and I think, I would hope that, now that the House has expected to change parties, that the projects that are of a priority to this region and this city don't somehow become political fodder and suffer detrimentally because of greater national politics with respect to both parties. You mentioned the comment, I believe you used the term, and I'm quoting, "political prostitute." I did lobbying for about 10, 12 years, actually 17 years, and that is a moniker and a label that those that don't understand the process give us. It's because they don't know how labor-intensive it is, they don't know the process by which you have to secure dollars or even pass a bill. And to them, it looks ugly. But that's just the nature of the beast in our political system, and we need folks that are going to be lobbyists, or what the naysayers may see as anything negative connotation that they want to stick a label on. It's necessary, because councils, individuals, sure, there are such things as citizen lobbyists, but they're not as effective as professional, well-trained, experienced advocates, is the term I would rather use for you individuals, than lobbyists or, in your colorful and funny language, political prostitute. So for those that are watching tonight, I want to stress the point that it is important that the city does have someone like you to carry the water, put us over the finish line, gather whatever means of support we need behind closed doors, so we can secure some of the funding for many of the projects that we are, the challenges rather, that we are faced with. The mayor was alluding to some of the days where both political parties could sit down at the table and have a meaningful conversation, and he's right. When I worked in Sacramento, I mean, I still have relationships with Herb Wesson, who was a Democratic former Speaker of the State Assembly, and LA City Councilman. I know Gil Sadio, he's in a little bit of hot water right now, but Gil was a friend and someone who could actually work with both sides of the aisle. Senator Wright is another in Sacramento that was instrumental at bringing both sides to the table. And I've even had success up there with Senator John Laird, who is of a very far-left progressive persuasion and different than mine. But nonetheless, when we were able to talk and get beyond the rhetoric and the, and the smoke and mirrors of the minutia of trying to outdo one another, we can no doubt accomplish much. I do have two quick questions. You stated, sir, Jamie, at the end of January 2023, a decision on the Gold Line will be made by, and then you listed an agency. What was the agency?
I don't know if it's Caltrans, or I don't know if Caltrans is the body that makes the decision, or if it's the governor's office.
Caltrans.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the cabinet-level position agencies, and it's, and Caltrans is part of it.
And then in your presentation tonight, you listed the two projects, the Gold Line that we've obviously been fighting for, for several years now.
Yes.
And then the Central Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Yes.
Yeah, Central Avenue, that's what I meant. In addition to those two, are there any others that you may have missed that?
Well, we've been, so the, I know the city's had a long-term interest in the Transcenter property, and the parking structure is something that we've been pushing and discussing for a couple of years, and we actually submitted the project request in the FY23 appropriations process earlier this year. But we are looking at transit grant funds for that, so we're hopeful, you know, Congress did pass in their major bipartisan infrastructure bill, funding that included monies for a five-year transportation authorization measure. And so there will be funding, you know, funding is coming down the pipeline, it's there, and there'll be grant opportunities, and we'll have to share those with your staff and see if that's something that we're in a position to pursue.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your, both your times, gentlemen. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, did you have any comments or questions?
Thank you for coming and speaking with us today, and sign me up for Washington when the time comes.
Make sure, hopefully it's not too cold, you know? It only gets down to about 20, 25 degrees, but I'm sure you have a winter coat or something that you can bring with you.
Well, look, we have seven winter coats, and we only have one cold day a year, so... Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the very thorough presentation this evening. I go back to Congressman Brown and Lewis. Many of us here knew them well, I knew them very well, as both of you did. I remember a comment Jerry Lewis made one day. He said, "There are three kinds of congressmembers. There are Democrats, there are Republicans, and there are appropriators." He said, "I'm proud to be the latter." That was an era, the Jerry Lewis, George Brown, very different political philosophies, but they worked together for tremendous benefit in this region. They saw the need to bring money into this region, and they did it. And I think it would be a shame if we ever, again, went back to getting rid of earmarks, because certain small projects, such as Saratoga Field, where we're looking at upgrades to make ADA accessibility, that would be harm. And I would hate to see, in this case, young people not be able to participate in sports activities. So I'm glad that so far the members have decided they want to keep earmarks. That's a positive. We're also fortunate in this region that we have members of Congress who are exceedingly well-placed. You did mention Calvert, although he doesn't represent San Bernardino County, he does represent Riverside County, on into Palm Springs, knows this area well, had business up here. We're good, it's great to have him there. We have Congressmember Torres. She's well-placed. We have, as you already mentioned, Congressmember Pete Aguilar, longtime friend of ours, number three. We have Judy Chu on Ways and Means. And now Judy represents two counties, as does Norma Torres, San Bernardino and L.A. County. The benefit of this is that they can bring those delegations together for what we need. I was rather pleased with reapportionment that included a little bit more of L.A. County, because they have a means and a will to get some things done. They're the big dog in California in Congress, and if they can get it done, that's a benefit to us. We have Grayson Politano, although she does not represent Montclair or San Bernardino County, she is one of the ranking members on transportation and knows the Gold Line very well. In fact, I had an opportunity to speak to her a few weeks ago on something. And I can tell you, she knows the Gold Line, she wants it through, she wants it here, she sees the benefit of it. To the south, we have Linda Sanchez, who will represent pieces of Chino Hills, and on into Diamond Bar and out into piece, portions of L.A. County. She's somebody our delegation can call on if we need it, because she's another ranking member. So we're fortunate, we don't have a lot of freshmen, we don't have a lot of midterm people, we have experienced people, and we need to call on them and work with them. And believe it or not, they will work together on a lot of these issues. I think they see the need for it. I concur with what most of my colleagues have said. There was a different time and place when we all got to get along a lot better. Reagan and Tip O'Neill, maybe not the best of friends, but they could sit down, iron out deals, and get things done. Ronald Reagan and Jesse Andrew, more than, well over 50 years ago in Sacramento, they could sit down, make deals, get things done, they knew each other's word was a bond. We can look back even over, well over 60, almost 70 years ago, 60, well, 60, when we were Eisenhower Republicans or Kennedy Democrats, we made things work in this country, and we have to get back to that. I know when I was going door-to-door, I had somebody, and they clearly weren't supporting me, and that's fine, they said, "Would I accept the outcome of the election?" And I said, "Absolutely, that's what democracy is. We've never had a problem here in Montclair." And I think it's sad, when it gets down to the level of a city council, somebody asking whether you'll accept the outcome of an election. I realize in other cities in California, that has become an issue, and maybe it is, but I don't think it is here in this region. I, in my professional life, deal with local cities, quite a bit at the Assembly and Senate, and quite a bit with Congress. And you're right, dealing with numbers versus what we deal with in Washington, D.C. But the sad thing is, it's becoming more and more polarized. You're not just a Democrat or Republican, you now have to fit a special box within each party. You're the this Democrat, or the that Democrat, you're this Republican or that Republican, and that's hurting us. And I think it's incumbent, each one of us here, if we want to move projects forward, if we want to see the Gold Line, if we want to see Saratoga Park, we have got to ourselves, stop dividing us along these lines of politics, and say, "We're one community, we're one region." And I, in the years I've been here, I understand what happens in Montclair is important, but equally important if Claremont or Laverne, or Chino, or Ancho Cucamonga, what happens there affects all of us, and we've got to start viewing this that way. The county line can no longer be this giant wall that separates us, it needs to be something that unites us, because our residents drive across that line every day. They go everywhere, and they don't care what cities they're in, they just know that they're going to work, or to school, or to recreate, or to shop. And certainly here, we want them to come this way and shop to Montclair. So I look forward to an opportunity to be in Washington, D.C. next year at some point. I look forward to our continuing good relations and thank you with, not just Norma Torres, Pete Aguilar, everybody else who calls this general area home, whether you're in L.A. County or San Bernardino County, we're all brothers and sisters, we're neighbors, we have to work together. And whatever we can do on Gold Line, John and I were on that call, and I specifically made calls to three L.A. County supervisors I know personally, Hilda Solis, Catherine Barker, Janice Hahn, and told them I appreciated their strong support. All of them, without question of fault, said they know where Montclair is, they've been here, and I think that's important. So we need, we, we know our folks in Washington, D.C. I know Pete Aguilar knows where we are, Norma certainly does. You know, I can tell you for a fact, Grayson Politano knows where we are, Judy Chu knows where we are. So that's a benefit. Keep up the good work there, and let us know what we need to do here to continue to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without any other questions, we are adjourned at 6:50.